We're going to be calling the meeting in order. Roll call.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Panarelo.
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pleasure of leading us in a moment of silence.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Directors met on June 11, 2024. Topic was personnel. Session lasted approximately 60 minutes. And we met on June 25. Topic was informational. Session lasted an hour. Public comment period number one. Donnie Savage.
Hi. I've been here repeatedly talking to you about the lawsuit that deemed that Pennsylvania's system of state funding to public education has been unconstitutional for decades, resulting in a statewide $5.4 billion funding gap. I have also talked to you about the process that has resulted in House Bill 2370, reflecting the work of the bipartisan Basic Education Funding Commission, and proposing a seven-year fix to this problem. And House Bill 2370 passed with bipartisan support by the House. This bill also replaces the arcane way that cyber charter schools are funded with an $8,000 per student flat fee. This is a $1.4 million savings per year for Boyertown. The bill now sits at the door of the Senate, and it's expected that this week the House and the Senate will be negotiating on this and many other issues to pass their budget by the mandated deadline of June 30, or not. As you know, I've been asking the Board to pass a resolution in support of this bill, especially because you are relying on the extra $2.1 million in adequacy and tax equity supplements in your budget, which you will only get if the bill passes. So at the last meeting, Board Member Jeffrey Zawada expressed concern with this bill after speaking with Representative Donna Shoren. Much of what he said is patently false, and I'll say that I did send a note to Mr. Zawada saying that I felt this, and I was going to say it. I offered to speak with him. He said he trusted what Representative Donna Shoren told him. So first, he claimed that the flat fee for cyber charter schools was changed from $7,500 to $12,000 per student. Absolutely false. The bill that was presented and passed started as, and still says, $8,000 per student. Second, he said twice that in order to receive the additional funding this year, the school district must raise taxes to the max allowed for the next three years. This also is completely untrue. There is no language in House Bill 2370 that requires any district to raise or lower taxes. That's your local control. In fact, Boyertown qualifies for the tax equity supplement, which acknowledges that the Board has had to rely too much on our weak tax base as a result of that inadequate state funding for decades. It gives the Board an opportunity to discuss alleviating the tax increases that you have been levying. And there were some other inconsistencies, too. Mr. Zawa-- I think I'll just stop here. I don't know if Representative Shoren didn't read the bill herself before she voted on it, or if she purposely gave false information to Mr. Zawada, or possibly Mr. Zawada grossly misunderstood what she said, or chose to be dishonest. But the record must be corrected. We can't have our elected officials telling our public blatant and outright falsehoods. This bill is publicly available and for all to see. It's House Bill 2370.
Ruth Baker, Budget.
Good evening. As I've said several times to Boards before this one and to some of you over the years, I would be delighted if you could not have consistently the size of tax increases that you're having, especially as a Republican when it is something that is not normally a platform Republicans have to raise taxes all the time, every year. The thing that I have proposed before is to reduce the amount of higher-cost administrative positions that you have. You can do that by pruning one assistant principal at senior high, assistant principals at junior high. You can combine a principalship for the two smallest elementary schools. Right there, when you look at the cost of salary and benefits, you're saving over a half million dollars without any trouble, and probably more. And so that's something that you can have a good administrative assistant do much of the paperwork and reporting sorts of things that certain administrators are tasked with doing. And those physicians don't command the sort of salary that you have for assistant principals and principals. So it's too late for this budget cycle, I'm afraid. But it would be so gratifying to see something other than the status quo that we've been seeing the last several years of tax increases that never seem to end. And in particular, because everyone rents his house from the district under penalty of losing it with a tax sale if they don't pay. The older you get, the more it's also a tax on longevity. Is this how we want to treat the people who've lived in this community the longest? Thank you.
And I'll be looking for the approval of the June 11, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I'm going to be giving a final budget review. There's no new information in this review other than the amount of homestead-farmstead relief that's available for taxpayers. So all of the revenue and expenditure information that's previously been shared with the Board, that remains unchanged. So I'm going to review the homestead-farmstead relief. I'm going to review the real estate tax increase scenario that is in the final budget that's on tonight's agenda for adoption. Review the proposed real estate tax installment plan available for taxpayers. Review the revenues and expenditures, and then again just touch on some budget uncertainties and offer some closing comments. For the 2024-25 homestead-farmstead property tax relief for the tax levy that would take place July 1, 2024, it is provided for by Act 1 of 2006, and it was modified in Act 25 of 2011. What it does is it provides state gaming revenue to school districts, and that allows school districts to provide tax relief to eligible homeowners. The total eligible homestead-farmstead properties in Berks County for 2024-25 is 5,292. That's up from 5,281 in the 2023-24 year. For Montgomery County, its total properties of 6,992 properties, up from 6,923 properties in 2023-24. For 2024-25, the total tax relief per eligible property, that would be properties that are eligible for homestead or farmstead relief, would be $210.65. In the prior year, the eligible tax relief was only $176.96. The 2024-25 real estate tax increase that is in the budget that is on tonight's agenda for adoption is a 3% increase. In 2023-24, the millage rate was 30.814 mils. A 3% increase would take the millage rate to 31.738 mils. The overall cost, based upon the average assessment of $143,000, taking into account the increased homestead-farmstead relief for 2024-25, the monthly increase based upon a 3% cross-- 3% increase would be approximately $8.20 a month. So that homestead-farmstead relief dropped that monthly increase from about $11 down to 11 because the-- down to eight because of the increase in the available dollars. The fund balance impact of a 3% increase-- The 2024-25 real estate tax increase and the impact on fund balance. At a 3% increase, total budgeted revenues would be $143,533,592. Total expenditures would be $144,809,358, which leaves a projected decrease in fund balance of $1,275,766. As far as real estate tax installment plans, in 2014 through 2020, the district provided for three equal installments for taxpayers, beginning with the 2020 levy and through the 2023 levy. We allowed for four equal installments, which provided that taxpayers could pay in four equal installments and not face a late fee. We also provided for a 2% discount if paid in full by August 31, and a 10% late fee if not paid in full on or before October 31. So for the 2024 tax levy, I'm recommending the installment plan recommendation remain at four equal installments, July 31, August 31, September 30, and October 31. And again, the 2% discount provided if paid in full by August 31, and a 10% late fee if not paid in full on or before October 31. The 2024-25 budgeted revenues remain at what has previously been shared with the Board of $143,533,592. Included within this budget is the Governor's proposed basic education funding of $21,346,633. Should that basic education funding not come to fruition, we would again be using more of our fund balance to support this budget. Our expenditures, as previously shared, are $144,809,358. You will see that $67,638,074 is for regular education. Special education is $24,916,909. Vocational education is $227,280. Other instructional programs are $190,156. Pre-K is $541,773. Pre-K is the only program that is fully supported by a grant that we received through the state. That is the only program the district currently has that is fully supported by the state. Support services are $40,345,717. Co-curricular services would be athletics and all the clubs and activities that are provided for by the-- to the students, $1,962,023. Our debt service and other expenditures is $7,187,426. The largest part of that relates to the prior year's debt related to district facilities and building construction projects, so the principal interest on those bond obligations from prior years. To break it down by the major object, the major type of expenditure, the bulk of our $144,809,358 in expenditures relates to personnel salaries, which is budgeted at $58,156,049. The personnel benefits, which includes tax costs, unemployment, workers' compensation, benefits, retirement, would be $39,612,734. Our contracted services are budgeted at $15,767,842. Our purchased property services are budgeted at $998,513. Other purchase services, which does include one of our largest costs, which is our charter school cost that we must pay, is $15,702,933. Supplies total $6,306,119. Property is $953,413. And then debt service dues and fees total $7,311,755. So again, for our budgetary uncertainties, again, it is the state funding amount that we will ultimately receive. The school board is forced to adopt a budget prior to the state adopting their budget. It leaves a lot of uncertainty. We have, however, budgeted to receive all of the Governor's proposed funding. And again, should we not receive that, then we would just utilize more of our fund balance to balance this budget. Charter school costs, again, continue to be a concern. Any relief we see in Harrisburg would obviously help our budgeted costs for charter schools. Healthcare costs continue to be an ever-increasing number that we continue to try and manage. And as we look at our class sizes and other programs, we know the average annual cost of an additional teacher is about $137,000. So all those factors weigh into the Board's decision-making tonight and going forward. So the good part of the presentation is there's more homestead-farmstead relief available for eligible properties. But the other side is our costs just continue to rise. That's it.
Patty. Who makes the number for the homestead? Where does that come out of? The state?
That comes from the state, from their gaming dollars. And then the county certifies which properties are homestead-farmstead eligible, and it's calculated down to that level. Ms. Nyman.
Oh, yeah, from last year's budget. I know we still have bills to pay, but where are we standing on that?
I can provide an update. Within the next two weeks, we have a number of large bills we're waiting on.
Like an estimate now, please.
I don't have that for you right now, Ms. Nyman.
That's imperative to know that. We should have some ideas to where we're at.
The fact that we are continuing to pay bills and the fact that without a crystal ball to know exactly what other costs are coming down, I don't think that, you know, it would be fair for Ms. D'Nicolino to give an estimated number and then hold her to that. So I don't believe that that was a question that's ever been asked in the past. And if it's something that would have been asked, I would say that, you know, give us those questions well in advance so that we can do our best guess of what could be out there. But, you know, just today, I approved more bills for special education costs. We're going through the first few weeks of ESY. So it's very hard to say what is really, you know, there with respects to the invoices that would be coming in.
I understand all that part of it. I'm just saying, right now, where are we standing? Do we have a surplus? Are we over? Are we under?
Ms. Nyman, with all due respect, the year is not yet closed out. We have a number of invoices we're waiting on, and it would be-- it would be an inaccurate opinion at this point, and I'm not-- feel like it would be appropriate to give an uninformed decision when we know that there are so many invoices we're waiting on. Some of our largest invoices from placements at private schools, from our charter school costs. All of those invoices coming in are greatly outside of our control. We're at the mercy of when those people send those invoices in. So it would be a shot in the dark, and I'm not willing to do that at this time.
The October 31 late fee is for people that are paying in full, but if they're paying in installments, they're not getting that. Just checking. Thank you.
Treasurer Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting to you a few-- excuse me, a few highlights from the May 2024 Treasurer's Report. For local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $159,374.01. Earned income tax collection was approximately $270,325.35. Transfer tax collection was approximately $105,933.63. For state revenue, PDE basic education funding, we received $5,133,304.15. For PDE special education funding, we received $1,174,222.18. For May's expenditures for salaries and benefits, it accounted for about approximately 69% of our monthly expenditure. That concludes my Treasurer's Report for this evening. Thank you.
Motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. Zawada moves.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, and I will be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. The 2022-23 Annual Financial Report, Audit Entry Adjustment Entry Authorization, Homestead-Farmstead Property Tax Relief, 2024-2025 Real Estate Tax Installment Payment Plan, Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation Grant Award, 24-25 Sports Student Accident Insurance, 24-25 Bullet Bit Awards, Board Treasurer Appointment, and Approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Zawada moves.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the final general fund budget for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Zawada moves.
Zawada first, Panarelo second. Discussion?
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
No.
Ms. Dieroff.
No.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I am looking for-- let's see. This is the resolution, Mr. Fultanic. So the recommended action is that the Board approve the Boyertown Area School District Resolution for Acting Superintendent, as discussed by the Board and developed by legal counsel, excluding--
Okay. The draft resolution that's in the possession of the Board will be approved, as is with the exception that Paragraph 2 regarding the engagement of search entity will be a separate action of the Board that will be addressed in subsection E of the agenda above for the BCIU Superintendent Search. So the appointment of Acting Superintendent, which appoints Michael R. Stout, who's currently serving a commission as District Assistant Superintendent through June 30, 2026, effective August 12, '24, as the Acting Superintendent of the school district, is presented based upon the fact that he will be on leave from his current Assistant Superintendent position and will be paid a supplemental amount in accordance with the resolution. And it is understood that there may be a transition and a shortage of adequate administrative staffing in item number three to address the vacant substitute Assistant Superintendent position, which will also be addressed by way of the BCIU Superintendent Search Agenda Action Item in Subsection E. A motion to approve the amended resolution as presented would be in order.
Zawada seconds.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
My issues against this resolution are outweighed by my desire to see Mr. Stout in the position to show us what he can do, so we can see going forward what kind of candidate he could be. So I will vote at this time, yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the electronic signature resolution as presented.
Dieroff seconds.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
8D, the Board of School Directors to approve the Berks County Intermediate Unit to conduct a superintendent search for the Boyertown Area School District.
Dieroff moves.
Um, Panarelo, second? Okay.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
8E, the Board of School Directors allow the Superintendent the authorization to make-- or we were pulling this one?
Well, what we're going to do is-- What we're going to do is modify this to take what was in item number two in the resolution.
No, this is different.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, 8D was for the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
No.
Sorry, my sheet here is not lining up with the agenda. I apologize.
Okay, the BCIU Superintendent Search is based upon the engagement letter that we have--
And we just voted on that.
Which we voted on, right? Okay.
Yes, yeah. So I'm moving on to, sorry--
This is-- This should be withdrawn, right?
Yes, yes. We're going to be removing the employment commitment authorization. Okay, moving that. It is letter D. It's there. My motion paper is not lining up with the agenda where I'm recording the votes. For that, I apologize. We just, I just read that one. The Board of School Directors approve the Berks County Intermediate Unit to conduct-- I understand, but on my paper, it's D. It's, there's-- Yeah, we just did. And we're removing, we're removing letter D.
No, E. We're removing E.
It's E on the printed paper. It's D within the system.
So we're not removing E from here?
No, right, yes, yes.
So we're removing D? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Why are we removing that?
I don't know why it's not lined up. Right, we're removing the motion-- just to clarify, we're removing the motion for employment commitment approval authorization. We're removing that motion. Okay. Yes.
But how are we gonna-- How are we gonna approve things if we don't have, we don't have any meetings scheduled?
To clarify, I was directed that we will be holding a meeting in July that will be posted, so that Mr. Hawn can make sure that any personnel items that he needs to have approved are approved in a public meeting.
So just to be clear, we just moved on to E on our paper.
Yes.
Correct, so just to clear up the confusion. So, so yes. So for...
When is it meeting in July?
Tentative.
To be determined.
Yeah.
I thought we didn't have any business with you in July as well.
Okay. We're moving on to the Steels Science Curriculum Materials. So we'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the purchase of the Steels Science Curriculum Materials as presented.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
This is on Steels, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to know what the committee, what they have to say about this.
Correct.
Or corrected committee. I mean, we're not getting any feedback, I'd like to know what they have to say about.
Are you saying that you would like to hear from the liaisons, the committee chairs, Mrs. Kratz and/or Mrs. Scott on the materials?
I'm sorry. Mrs. Kratz?
So we're, Mr. Updegrove?
That would be Brad Updegrove.
Yes. Who's on first? What's on second?
Mrs. Kratz, I mean, nothing more? Do you have anything else to add? No, I don't. The presentations we had, I thought were, were fine.
You know, I need some kind of...
I, I looked at it, we looked at it pretty thoroughly that one day, and really didn't find anything that I think the board was, would have been concerned about.
I guess the question is, are we getting a recommendation from the liaisons to go forward?
Well, I'm not on the curriculum committee, but I was there.
Liaisons recommending we go forward.
Yeah.
That's all. Just looking for that recommendation. You guys recommend even forward a little? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we have a yes from Mrs. Kratz, a yes from Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the comparative government textbook purchase as presented.
It's, I need a motion, first and a second.
Brophy moves.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Mrs. Deroff.
Once again, I'm asking for a report from the committee.
The opportunity was there to review the books. I looked at the book, I understand, the curriculum committee looked at the book, and it was very in-depth. It was there for a week, for anybody, and it was sent out, that anybody could review it, so, this is my opinion. So it's not the curriculum committee, but the book happens to be exceptional.
Right, that's why I was asking for the curriculum committee, that's why we have one. So I wanted to know what their thoughts were.
What's the curriculum committee's view on this? You're approving, you're recommending we go with it? That's, that's all we're asking.
It's already an existing class, and this textbook would support that class and help the students that are in that class to be better prepared for the AP exam.
So...
Yes.
So you're approving the book to improve the class? That's, that's the question?
Yes, I think it would help.
No hidden meaning in this?
No, I think it would help.
Be okay with the book?
I think it would help the students, and I think it would help the teacher.
Thank you.
Yes, agreed, yeah.
That's what, that's what we have committees for, so, gonna ask the committee what they think about, or liaison.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the 2024-2025 food service budget and proposed lunch prices as presented.
Nine minutes. Deroff seconds.
Mrs. Kratz?
She has a question.
Are we doing any free lunches or breakfasts, or is that part of this, or... That's mandatory. Okay. Yep. So we still are, are covering that? Yes, free and reduced lunches will always be in existence, as well as free breakfasts for, for all. Yep. Thank you. Yep.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The Board of School Directors to approve the agreement with Security Care, Inc. and Boyertown Area School District as presented.
Deroff moves.
I'll second.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Mr. Quigley, I want, first, I want to thank you for the continuing service you provide each and every year.
We're not on that.
We're on Security Care.
We're on Security Care.
Oh, I thought we were on, I thought we were on the bus service.
Nope, not yet.
Oh, well, then, yes.
Not yet.
I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the wrong way, too. Okay, yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Forget what I said, I'll bring it back later.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
He runs a very safe bus system.
Actually, yeah. Well, I, I don't want to get to that part.
Turn your mic off.
The Board of School Directors approve Quigley Bus Service as the district student transportation provider for the contract period of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2029.
So Wada moves. Seconds.
Nyman and Zawada. Comments? Right. Mr. Sultanic, since I drive for Mr. Quigley, I want to make sure that I am allowed to vote on this, since I've heard from some people in the community that say I should excuse myself.
Legally, you can vote on this, because it is my understanding that you do not have a greater than 5% equity interest in Quigley Bus Service, unless Mr. Quigley is going to be very generous today and offer that to you. But, you know, if you want to avoid any appearance of impropriety, you can abstain, because you're an employee, from that action.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Thank you, Mr. Quigley, yes.
Mr. Brophy?
I won't repeat it again, but thank you very much, yes.
Ms. Deroff?
I hope you have a wonderful year, yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Nine minutes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new secondary special ed supervisor, Jessica Cunningham. She's coming to us from Penn Manor, so after two rounds of interviews with a large group, she was our, our candidate of choice, and we are extremely happy to have her, so, welcome.
I see all of you, I look forward to joining the Boyertown team.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Yeah, thank you.
Public comment period number two, Donia Savage, budget.
Hi again. I'd like to speak to you about budget, fiscal irresponsibility, and lack of transparency. We, the school community, expect our elected officials to act with integrity, work hard to use our tax dollars in a fiscally responsible manner, and be transparent with us about how they are doing so. I reflect on my experience on this board when I make my comments tonight. So now, first, how does a board rely on $2.1 million of extra state funding, based on a proposal that they will not advocate for and even speak against? There are some big questions I haven't heard answered as well. What happens if the $2.1 million does not come through? Actually, I heard that say it will come from fund balance, so, when I'm looking at your fund balance now, it looks like after that, if that doesn't come through, you've got about one or two more years left on your fund balance. Not sure what you'll do after that. What happens if the state budget is delayed, and we do not get any state funding until it's resolved? How long can we operate without borrowing funds? What's the impact? And, and how is our fund balance looking for the next several years? I just haven't heard these questions. Regarding the superintendent, superintendent search, I understand that contracts can be done in executive session and should be. There's just an opportunity to tell your community a little bit about what, what you're doing, why you're picked by BCIU, is it nationwide? And given the likelihood of a 10-month-plus search, how will Mr. Stout's regular duties be covered? But I did hear a little bit about that. People are very concerned about security. So who is Security Care, Inc.? Who are they? And what services are they providing? What did you just vote on tonight? I think our community would be very interested in hearing it. You're missing opportunities to be transparent with your public. And regarding the five-year Quigley Bus Service contract, without a doubt, Quigley has been a reliable and longstanding transportation provider for our schools. However, for any single budget item that exceeds 5% of your total budget, I think there's an opportunity to talk about performance publicly, talk about how you've thought about different options, and, fine, if you stay with Quigley, that's great, but I think, again, you're missing an opportunity. I had expected that with the change in board leadership, there would come more transparency and accountability to your community, as was expressed by the current board president. But without having these conversations, you can't make improvements, and you lose public trust. Tonight, you passed a budget with a 3% increase, which, by the way, is the average tax increase at Boyertown over the past 15 years, even while relying on $2.1 million of additional basic education funding that you may not get beyond the half million that you would normally get. And yet, you still need to pull almost $1.3 million from your $8.4 million fund balance just to keep the boat afloat. To me, it doesn't sound fiscally sound, it doesn't sound like we'll be moving forward in a, in a good manner. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Baker? Artificial turf.
So two meetings ago, I had mentioned it would be good to see how much it would cost to, if we can't do it ourselves with the staff we have, get an outside contractor to upgrade or rehabilitate our fields, their grass, and see how much it costs to maintain them, so you have a baseline of what you have, bringing it to what it should be, again, de-weeded, more smooth playing surface, et cetera. And so, one outfit that does this, that does public schools, private schools, Penn State, Lehigh, and in between, I have no financial interest in these people. I don't even know anybody who works there. It's called Hummer Turf Systems, Inc., out in Mannheim, and they are at 717-898-5000. I would say it wouldn't hurt to get a proposal from them for the fields that you're looking to ask for turf, and see whether the costs are comparable on the maintenance side to what you'd have for artificial turf, and see how much it would cost to make these fields pleasant to play on, that we have already. After all, how many generations have played on grass at Boyertown? Last meeting, one of the coaches who was supporting the artificial turf stated that there weren't any concerns raised ever that she could recall about the paints or the herbicides used on the fields. Do I need to do a FOIA to see what you folks are using right now? Or could someone email me the SDSs for the compounds in question? Because basically, if you're doing a spray paint, you have a lot of things that volatilize in the air. They're not going down into subsoil or groundwater. If you have heavier organics, they tend to absorb to the humus in the soil. They don't tend to go down through to the groundwater, as you would certain inorganics, especially if you have slightly acidic rainfall. So that's why I'm asking the question of what you're actually using. Thank you.
Board comment period. Mr. Updegrove?
No comment.
Ms. Nyman?
I'll pass for tonight.
Ms. Kratz?
Okay.
Ms. Scott? Ms. Deroff?
Yeah, we have a new position, that we just, I approved a salary tonight, which I don't know how much that is, because it's not listed. However, when we have a new position, don't we have to approve the position? And I don't know that we approved anything, so I'm getting very confused of how some of this stuff is getting on the agenda, because we already have three assistant principals, one, one regular principal, guidance counselors, school counselors, attendance persons, seven and a half security people we have there, police officers, well, I guess they're not police officers, just security. So we've got a job description for this position, but to my knowledge, we never approved it, so I don't know if that's legal or not. And then I was checking some more things, and there's a lot of information, nobody gave me back from my request that I put in, which other board members seemed to get it back the same day. I've been waiting for over a week. But what I did find out, some of the, I don't understand this, apparently, nobody's taking vacation, because we're paying out a lot of money to people for their vacation they're not using, so apparently, we're giving too much vacation. When we pay out $80,000 for unused vacation, that's a lot of money. And then another $50,000 for bonuses, we pay out longevity pays. I, I see where we could cut back on a lot of money. The other thing I want to know is tuition reimbursement program that we have, are we collecting the money back from the people that are leaving the district after they've used that and they haven't been here for the length of time that it's quoted they must be? I'd like some answers on that. The other thing is, do we have to, does an employee have to be full-time in order to The other thing is, do we have to, does an employee have to be full-time in order to get PISers or can they get that at part-time? Is there certain hours, a maximum number of hours they have to work? Let me see. I also ask about, we, to my knowledge, we have not had our fields fertilized, we have not had grub control, we have not had any of that done to our fields. They look terrible. I can understand why people are complaining. So I'd like to know why that hasn't been done and what we're doing about that to keep our fields in decent shape. If we're going to get turf, it's not going to happen overnight, so we're still going to have to use those fields for a specific amount of time, which they're really getting to look bad. And I don't imagine anybody found the trophy I was talking about that we got for the state for having exemplary fields.
We do know exactly where that is. It's a plaque and it hangs in the main office of the high school, and it's been hanging there.
Where?
In the main office of the high school, on the wall.
Just hanging on the wall there.
It's in the wall, it's where people can see it because I've received multiple pictures of it.
Good, I'm glad because when I mentioned it before, the public laughed at me like it didn't happen, and I knew. I can send you the picture. That'd be great because I'll carry it with me then. That would be great. Maybe I'll print it out and put it at your spot, and then it can be right in front of you at all times. That would be wonderful. Thank you so much for thinking of me. I like that idea. Okay. We are transferring a music teacher. And to my knowledge, for an elementary school, we always had one teacher covering a couple of the elementary schools, but I didn't see where he's going to be anywhere else except one of them.
That's just the base. So we only list where their home base is, but my understanding is that this position travels from, or is at Culbordale, Washington Elementary School, and I want to say Gilbertsville or, I think, but they report to that building, they should not be transitioning through the day under most circumstances. I believe that's the way the schedules are built.
Sounds like if they go to Gilbertsville, they'll be there all night.
Yes.
Good.
That is my understanding. There wouldn't be enough time for them to be running back and forth between the buildings.
Right. And if we could have salaries on our papers from now on, I'd appreciate that. Some of the positions, I don't talk directly to them. I'm supposed to talk directly to you.
I know, but Mr. Hahn's sitting right there, so you, under my supervision, I'm watching what you're saying to him, you can certainly give him direction.
Okay, I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you. And I will get answers for all that.
Well, it's my fault that you didn't get your answers because I didn't press send. So I will make sure that that email is sent out, but I can tell you that you've added things on there that are not a part of the collection. So I will have to go back and listen to all of your questions, or you could gladly write them back down to me in an email and I can respond back. However, I can do it one of two ways, so no problem.
This board's about to go forward and maybe one of the most important, if not the most important, duties we have, that's selecting a superintendent for the district. The superintendent becomes the face of the district. The superintendent sets the direction of the district. The superintendent sets the goals, not the goals, but the culture. If they don't set it, they have a lot to do with it. Boyertown is a, can I say this, a difficult school district to manage for many reasons. We have a huge, what, 100 square miles?
99.9.
With 10 buildings across it.
Nine. Nine school buildings, but 10 buildings that we maintain.
10 buildings, 10 buildings to maintain.
With Pine Forge thrown in there to kind of oversee.
Kind of, so we have that, we have, I guess, demographics economically that change from one end of the district to the other. So it's important at one end of the district, may not be important at the other end of the district. That has to be managed, that has to be looked at, it has to be understood, and we have to try and accommodate both sides. We have a political differentiation in this district as we go across two counties, just a little bit, two counties. That also makes it difficult, if not very difficult. That's what a superintendent's walking into and has to go with. One of, some of the things I'm looking for as we go forward, I'll say what I'm looking for. I'd like to see people with superintendent experience that can show us a track record of what they've done and can show us our vision, her or his vision and plan. And I also put that down to also assistant superintendents, but I would look for the same things from them. What was their track record where they were? What kind of vision do they have? And what kind of plan do they think they can put together for it? So as we go forward with this, I'm only one of nine people. I'm laying out the things I'm looking for. I hope the other board members also are clear in what they're going to look for as we move forward so we can judge all of the people that come in fairly and evenly. And also, Mr. Stout, you've been here for a while. You've had, you've got assistant superintendent experience, I'm sure we take that into account. And we'll be looking at everybody and judging that way, at least I will.
And you know how wonderful it is.
Thank you.
I have a question, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I'm fine, go ahead.
I just have a question on that job thing I was talking about. Can I get an answer on that tonight? Is that legal what we did? Or does that have to, I don't want to leave here and have that up in the air.
Do we, was this a newly created position?
Yes, it was, it's a liaison position which we have to exist, three existing within special education. So it's new to the area that it was going to, yes.
I believe, and we could pull it up, Policy 301 on board docs, and that applies not to just Boyertown, that's why I know it, is, deals with the process for establishing or creating a new position. And technically, the standard PSBA policy requires the board to vote on a newly created position. If I, if my recollection serves me correctly.
Your recollection serves you correct.
Now, was the job description shared with the board?
Yes.
On the vote, okay. So usually, Policy 301 just says that the board has to vote on the creation of the position and the job description. The question is whether the board vote in engaging this implicitly did that.
No, I asked for an executive session before we clicked open.
Pardon me?
No, we did not vote on it, and I did ask to have it pulled, and it was not done. I was called to them. Because I wanted to discuss it.
Okay. Actually, the creation of a position is not appropriate for an executive session. That's a public discussion.
Well, I just asked to have it pulled, I didn't say I wanted an executive session.
Understood, but technically, you're correct. We should vote on the creation of new positions. I don't believe that that necessarily invalidates the engagement that we did in the action, but we may want to, because it's not on the agenda technically right now, we may want to, at our July meeting, have a board ratification officially authorizing this position with a job description.
Okay. Well, with that being the case, once we vote on the job, we're stuck with that forever then.
No, you're not.
It's a teacher's, it's on the teacher's contract.
Doesn't matter. Under the teacher's contract, the fact that you create a position doesn't mean you need to fill the position. In fact, the very first labor arbitration that I ever handled in Boyertown was in 1978, and we had in our extra duty contracts, which were then part of the collective bargaining agreement, we had numbers next to each one of the positions, and the arbitrator held. Those numbers are really meaningless because it's your management prerogative to decide how many people we fill the position with on an annual basis. So once that, if that position gets vacated, we don't do that. And right now, I'm sure, I'm looking at Mr. Hahn, and, you know, we don't necessarily fill all the positions that have been created in this district, and we change that from time to time. That's purely a management prerogative.
There was one before where the previous superintendent, that we did something with the positions which a union said was okay, and then the next year they made it stolen or something. Something happened before.
I don't believe the union, you know, the union has a lot of power, but they can't make us fill positions.
Was it, hang on, what it was?
Okay, well, your memory might be better than mine, so.
It was to have pre-K, part of the, the first year we were okay. And then the second year, they said, no, we had to include them.
That was whether they were included in the bargaining unit. If I recall, on that issue, weren't those pre-K counts individuals originally hired by our foundation? And then we took over the program, Mr.?
I believe initially, it was an MOU, that was part of it, and the foundation did have oversight.
Right.
And then as the CBA came up, it got bargained into being, but they are their own separate entity within the CBA.
Okay, but that's a different issue. But next year, we don't have to fill a pre-K counts position if we don't want to. I think what the union forced us to do is to include them within the collective bargaining agreement and to bargain their wage levels. The union has the right to say, for that position or for the new position, this is what we're going to pay. What is different in this situation, it's my understanding, that we have other liaisons, this is a variant on our existing liaison, which already has an established compensation rate in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, my apologies.
You don't have to apologize, it's a good question.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was still awake, okay.
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Danicola for all her hard work on the budget and what she's put herself through to last, or the whole school district, basically, with the issues that have popped up. But thank you again. I'm pretty sure your number, you've had a pretty good track record, an excellent track record on previous budgets. So as long as the state does what they're supposed to, we should be fine.
All right, upcoming board meetings, we do have one to be determined for July. We have July 9, the 16th, and the 23rd. Mr. Hahn, where do you see the best place for you to have another opportunity for the adoption of any new personnel? Those are all Tuesdays.
I think splitting the difference would probably be the best option, so the 16th.
The 16th. That's saved for Tuesday, everyone? Then I'm going to have. Right, I will advertise for it because we need to advertise for it in advance, but I can wait till closer to the time that we have to advertise, but I'd like everybody to hold that date for July 16, Tuesday, July 16.
And would that be a virtual meeting in all likelihood?
That's not for me to decide. My recommendation is that would make it easy, but I know that there are folks here that would like to have a in-person meeting. So I guess that can be determined as well. If you want me to be in attendance, it should be virtual.
Okay.
So.
It's your responsibility. No.
Otherwise? That's right. Okay, well, we'll be back to you on the 16th, about the 16th, but mark it with a big star on your calendar. And after that, then the new calendar, or the new year starts on August 13 and the 27th for upcoming board meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
Line it moves.
Brophy, seconds.
Meeting adjourned.